Members, this is the appointed time, so we start the session for this afternoon on constitutional and mainland affairs. Good afternoon, Secretary. Welcome to our meeting. I'll give you the floor now. Chairman, I wish to brief members on the main points of the estimates of expenditure of the Constitutional and Mainland Affairs Bureau in 2023-24. In this financial year, the bureau is allocated $852 million of funding. The focus of our work for this financial year is as follows. On improving the electoral system, the government successfully conducted the election committee, subsector ordinary elections, and legislative council general election respectively in September and December 2021, as well as the chief executive election and legislative council election committee constituency by election respectively in May and December 2022. The four elections were held smoothly under the principle of fairness, openness, and honesty. The elections expanded the characteristics of broad representation, political inclusiveness, balanced participation, and fair competition. They represent a significant enhancement to the democratic system of the Hong Kong SAR. The government will uphold the new improved electoral system in the long term to fully implement the principle of patriots administering Hong Kong. In order to enhance the community's understanding of the new electoral system and its merits, the bureau will continue to deploy new resources to publicize and promote the new system through different channels and means, including co-producing with RTHK a series of info-educational video clips. At the same time, the bureau will also continue to collaborate with the Electoral Affairs Commission and REO to review various electoral arrangements, further apply information technology to the electoral process, and streamline the electoral arrangements to ensure that elections are fair, open, honest, as well as efficient and user-friendly. On district administration review, the Home and Youth Affairs Bureau is working with us on the review and recommendations to ensure that the future arrangements will comply with the basic law and the principles of patriots administering Hong Kong so as to enhance the efficiency of governance. The review will cover areas such as the functions, composition, formation methods of district organizations which are not organs of political power, and the district-based governance system. We're working in full steam with the review, and the government will announce a finding as soon as possible. Should the proposal involve any legislative amendment, the government will submit the proposal to LEGCO for consideration according to the established procedures. The constitution and the basic law together form the constitutional basis and order of the Hong Kong SAR and provide the strongest safeguard for the long-term prosperity and stability for Hong Kong. We attach great importance to the publicity and education of the constitution and the basic law. In 2023-24, the bureau will set aside $26 million for carrying out various publicity work, including making better use of online platforms and social media, mounting large-scale publicity activities in the community, producing easy-to-understand TV programs, and organizing different activities such as talks, roving exhibitions, mobile interactive game booths, and parent-child workshops with a view to enabling the community to have a correct grasp of the constitution, the basic law, the relationship between one country and two systems, as well as the constitutional order of the Hong Kong SAR. The government has set key performance indicators for the above publicity work. More activities will gradually be held. In 2024, no less than 700 promotional activities should be held with no less than 900,000 participants, and there should be no less than 25 million views of online publicity materials, an increase of 10% compared with last year. Under the steer of the Constitution and Basic Law Promotion Steering Committee chaired by the Chief Secretary for Administration, our bureau and other relevant bureaus and departments will continue to actively take forward various promotion and education initiatives. On integration into national development, the Steering Group on Integration into National Development was established in the end of last year. The chief executive chairs the group, underpinned by three department secretaries and deputies. They form a one-plus-three leadership at the top level so that a strategic, macroscopic, and high-level perspective can be adopted in coordinating and supervising Hong Kong's integration into national development. We'll also actively dovetail our initiatives with high-quality development national strategies such as the 14th Five-Year Plan, the Greater Bay Area Development, the Belt and Road Initiative, as well as enhancing collaboration with different regions in the mainland. According to the chief executive, in taking forward Hong Kong's integration into national development effectively, we need to work on three fronts. First, policy bureaus should conduct thorough research, including consultation with relevant sectors and stakeholders. Second, key officials responsible for coordination and leadership must work effectively. And third, targets should be laid down for monitoring the progress and ensuring implementation. The Steering Group has convened two meetings by far, and it will continue to formulate and implement policy measures in a proactive and pragmatic manner under the principle of mutual benefit so as to facilitate Hong Kong's integration into national development and grasp the endless opportunities therein to provide development impetus to Hong Kong. On high-quality development of the Greater Bay Area, the government will maintain close liaison with relevant central ministries and commissions, the Guangdong Provincial Government and Macau SAR government. We will leverage on the existing cooperation mechanisms between Guangdong, Hong Kong, and Shenzhen and Hong Kong, and deepen exchange through different task forces. The government will seek further policy innovation and breakthroughs to develop the Greater Bay Area into an international first-class Bay Area ideal for living, working, and traveling. With a strong support of the central government, a number of policy measures in various areas has been introduced over the past few years to support Hong Kong residents and enterprises to pursue development in the mainland cities of the Greater Bay Area, as well as to assist the mainland cities in tapping into international markets, thereby leveraging Hong Kong's dual roles in going global and attracting foreign investment. To further enhance publicity and promotion in the mainland cities of the Greater Bay Area, as well as support for Hong Kong people and enterprises there, the Hong Kong Economic and Trade Office in Guangdong of the government will set up the Guangdong-Hong Kong-Macau Greater Bay Area Development Promotion Centre. The Promotion Centre will promote opportunities brought about by the Greater Bay Area development and provide appropriate support and assistance when needed to Hong Kong people and enterprises in the mainland cities of the GBA by means of providing information on the Greater Bay Area and inquiry services, as well as organizing seminars and study missions. The government has set performance indicators on the above publicity work, namely, we plan to organize and participate in promotional programs and networking sessions to be attended by no less than 8,000 participants and reach out to no less than 1,000 entrepreneurs and representatives of business firms in 2023. The above indicators will go up by 10% next year. In 2023-24, the financial provision of the five mainland offices of the Hong Kong SAR government and their 11 liaison units is roughly $353 million. In the end of last year, dedicated teams for attracting businesses and talents were set up in mainland offices late last year to proactively reach out to target enterprises and talents in the mainland and pursue them to pursue development in Hong Kong with a view to attracting quality enterprises and talents to come to Hong Kong. There are also visits to enterprises and businesses together with various promotion activities so as to assist target enterprises in setting up their presence or expand the business in Hong Kong. Another main function of the mainland offices is organizing various activities to promote Hong Kong's advantages. The mainland offices will enhance publicity offline and online to promote to mainland citizens and businesses the opportunities in Hong Kong and the unique advantages of one country, two systems, so as to tell good stories of Hong Kong to the mainland. After resumption of normal travel between Hong Kong and the mainland in February this year, the large-scale promotional campaign "Howl Hong Kong" has been launched by the government, and the mainland offices have actively offered support and coordination so as to attract more mainland visitors to Hong Kong. The government has set indicators for the above publicity work. More activities will gradually be held. In 2024, no less than 3,200 visits should be made to mainland units and organizations, no less than 270 speaking occasions should be attended, no less than 330 media interviews and briefings should be conducted, and no less than 800 business and trade meetings should be attended. And these indicators will be increased by 15% from last year. In addition, the mainland offices will continue to maintain close liaison with organizations, trade associations, enterprises, student groups comprising Hong Kong residents to understand their needs and provide appropriate assistance and to help reflect their views to mainland authorities. On rights of individuals, the subventions to the EOC and Office of the Privacy Commissioner for personal data remain a major part of our provision. The EOC is responsible for implementing four anti-discrimination ordinances. In 2023-24, the total subvention is $130 million. Earlier, the LEGCO passed the relevant bills to enhance protection from discrimination and harassment under the four ordinances. We will continue to work with the EOC to study the protection provided by the legislation and study in-depth any legislative amendment proposal to eliminate discrimination or harassment in light of social needs. The EOC also promotes a message of anti-discrimination and equal opportunities through different public education and publicity activities. The total subvention for PCPD in 2023-24 is $94 million. The PCPD will continue to combat doxing acts which have been criminalized through various fronts, and will also carefully study other legislative amendment proposals of the PDPO, Personal Data Privacy Ordinance, and consult the panel's views in due course. That concludes my presentation. Myself and my team will be happy to take questions from members. Thank you. Thank you, Secretary. We have 70 minutes to go. We have 10 members waiting to speak, so we'll start with Mr. Stephen Ho. I have a question on 022 and 023, the questions submitted by Mr. Holdan Chow about number of Hong Kong residents studying in mainland high education institutions and research institutes, and problems in relation to taking out social security and other insurances. Well, according to the administration's reply, a table of figures has been provided, and yet in relation to the latter question, you said that you will begin collecting data in 2023. We have been promoting Greater Bay Area's development for years, and as we are working full steam towards promoting high-quality development and integration into national development, this should be a major initiative. So this question for the SAR government is, how many government officials, civil servants, are in charge of collecting data? I don't know if the mainland offices play a part in this regard. Since we have more frequent exchanges nowadays, we often come across different problems. Let's say, if I want to refuel my car, well, if I only have the home visit re-entry permit, I need to pay slightly more expensive fare. Now, there are also other problems facing students studying in mainland institutions. For example, for the children, there is a question mark on whether they're able to get a school place. So it's not just about developing their career in the mainland, but rather other issues. And of course, well, earlier, a permit was introduced for Hong Kong residents living for a prolonged period in the mainland for them to be able to buy high-speed rail tickets. But I think a review should be conducted, and the SAR government should deploy more resources in this regard. That means equal treatment?
Thank you. I thank the member for his questions. Indeed, we have the one country, two systems in place, so there are variations in the rules, regulations between the mainland and in Hong Kong. We're trying to address those issues and try to have some kind of mutual access. We've been listening to the views from stakeholders, including political parties. We've received helpful comments. We're talking to the mainland authorities to have more facilitation measures for Hong Kong residents. As Mr. Stephen Ho has noted, we have done a lot of work and achieved a lot. But to overcome all those issues that would take more work. At our various mainland economic and trade offices, we remain in touch with the Hong Kong people living there to find out what they need, what difficulties they run into to help them. Chair, one more point. You need to get started somewhere. Reflecting the comment isn't good enough. Take the home visit permit as an example. Within Guangdong Province, their home return visit is not recognized in many places in Guangdong Province. I go to a supermarket or a car park, I want to sign up for a certain scheme, and that place simply does not recognize the home return permit. Can we get started with the home return visit so that Hong Kong people living in the mainland get treated the same way as any other mainland resident? If we cannot even get equal treatment, then it will be hard to achieve integration. So let's get started with the home return permit. I was talking about how we come up with policies that includes home return permits. The member mentioned buying tickets, et cetera. We have achieved breakthroughs. We have achieved some kind of facilitation measures. There will be more to come in the future. I will continue to listen to LEGCO members and members of the public. We will talk to the mainland. We will press for more measures and try to do better, and we're happy to listen to people's comments. Can you tell us about something more recent? Do you have some recent schemes, plans? Before we come to a ripe moment, we won't disclose too much so as not to create pressure or misunderstanding. Once we achieve a breakthrough and come up with a new measure, we will make an announcement to the public. Speaking for my trade, I've been asking for equal treatment for people from my trade in the Greater Bay Area, just like that with any other mainland resident. Ms. Nextin Lam. CMAB not for four, that's about the mainland offices, mainland trade and economic and trade offices. So my question is, will the government allocate resources to conduct surveys on demographics on Hong Kong people living in the mainland so to gather more accurate data? But the reply focuses on residents normally staying in Guangdong Province. That fails to answer my question I was asking about the mainland as a whole. Hong Kong people are not just living in Guangdong Province, they live in other provinces too. In many other provinces, there are Hong Kong people investing, they are pursuing education, they're... Now, apart from the gender, the age, we don't know what industries they're in, what their educational attainments are. We cannot do data analysis based on just that. We need to provide targeted support so that Hong Kong people, Hong Kong firms in the mainland can get assistance. The data are vague, they're not clear, they're not helpful for our own strategies. The mainland census has already covered Hong Kong, Macau, and Taiwan residents. Would the government consider collaboration with the mainland census department to compile the relevant data aligned with their practices so that we can have a clearer view of things? I thank the member for her questions. Indeed, we don't have data on the situation nationwide. So we provide the data based on what we have from the Census and Statistics Department on Guangdong Province. Indeed, we need to get a picture of the national situation that will help us with our policymaking. The national authorities have a great deal of data about the entire country. The data cover residents of Hong Kong, Macau, in other parts of China. We're talking to the National Statistics Administration. We need to find out more, and then we can share what we have. We don't know the methodology well yet, so giving you what we have at this point would be irresponsible. I was saying that we need to get our hands on the helpful data. We need the data, and then we can have an interactive process so that we can formulate more targeted policies in the future. Indeed, that's also our goal. Once we get a clearer picture, we will tell you more. We also want to do more research on the mainland's policies and measures. If members have comments on the specific kinds of data that you have in mind, we welcome suggestions and comments, and we can think of ways to compile those statistics. Next, Mr. Ronik Chen. Chairman, I have three questions. CMAB 009, 021, and 031 009. This has to do with the Greater Bay Area Development Office. Thirty-three people work in the office unchanged over the past few years, but then some years ago, it was $28 million, and then it went up afterwards, and then this year it dropped to $29 million. Why this fluctuation in non-personnel expenses? COVID was with us over the past three years, I can see why there was no addition to the establishment. But then now cross-boundary travel has resumed. Would the government consider providing more manpower for the office? Next question, CMAB 021, the five mainland ETOs. The estimate, for the Guangdong Economic and Trade Office, that has seen a huge rise in expenses, 22%. That's a sharp increase. Doesn't mean a lot of work has to be done, there will be many activities in the GBA. For the other four mainland offices, they have seen a drop in expenses. There was a nearly 10% drop with the Beijing office expenditure. People would think that after COVID, you would do more in publicity, so more money needs to be spent. So how come the Beijing office will have a smaller expenditure compared to other offices? Now, for 031, the reply, there will be five improvement measures. First, the electronic poll register, and also the central platform for election advertisements. And there's also be a mobile input system for election-related statistics, and also actively studying the use of electronic counting for functional constituency with more registered voters, and then the use of IMsmart for new registration by geographical constituency voters. Just then, Ms. Alice Mack was saying a new arrangement would be announced soon. So for the use of IMsmart for new registration by geographical constituency electors, when will the work be done? Would there be more expenses? Or are people expected to sign up on IMsmart and no additional expenditure will be needed? First, I will invite my colleague, the Permanent Secretary, to tell us more about the Economic and Trade Offices, Ms. Gracey Fu. Our mainland offices have enough resources and manpower to do their job. Cross-boundary travel has resumed, more work needs to be done. Over the years, especially for last year, those offices got more resources. That has to do with the celebrations for the 25th anniversary of the handover. So there were large-scale activities celebrating the 25th anniversary. No officers saw a cut in the resources. Indeed, more resources will be going to the Guangdong Economic and Trade Offices. We will set up a Greater Bay Area Promotion Centre, there will be staff, there will be promotional activity, so there will be more resources going to the Guangdong office. On the IMsmart, I will invite my colleague from the Registration and Electoral Office to tell us more. We are getting help from the Office of the Government Chief Information Officer. So IMsmart will be extended for voter registration. People can use the authentication, the e-me function, and also digital signature on IMsmart. This means people can do online submissions for new voter registration, or they can also amend registered information to bring greater convenience for people. It depends on how things are going with the development of the system. The REO plans to start at some pilot spot to improve the process so that for the voter registration next year, the system can be launched in full. Chair, my first question remains unanswered. The establishment of the GBA office, 33 people, no change in establishment. Now that we have full, normal cross-boundary travel, will there be more resources, more manpower to do more work? Mr. Moak? Mr. Benjamin Moak? We have 33 officers in the establishment. We've been keeping an eye on the work in the GBA. If there's a need to have more workers, we will go through the established procedure to apply for more resources. We're now keeping an eye on the promotion work in the Greater Bay Area, so you have enough resources. No issue. Next, Dr. Chau Man Kao. Thank you, Chair. 022 065 033 022. The question is, over the past three years, number of Hong Kong residents studying at the mainland? The government gave us figures. Over the past two years, those are the figures from our country's Ministry of Education. More and more people are pursuing tertiary studies in the mainland. Now we have 21,000, apart from scholarships. Can our mainland officers also provide support in terms of internship employment? We need to get them to come back to Hong Kong to work. That's how we can create stronger impetus for growth in Hong Kong. Now, some questions about the figures. Please note this, Secretary. The number of Hong Kong people in the mainland. We have the National Reform and Development Commission, they have the figures, and also the exit and entry authorities, and also the local departments in charge of the household registration system, also known as HUCO system. It's hard for the Hong Kong government to access all the data, but those data will have serious ramifications on how we can support Hong Kong people and Hong Kong firms in the mainland. We don't even know where those Hong Kong people are in the mainland. Then spending money would be money going down the drains. So the government needs to talk to think tanks with universities and also the research And then you can take a targeted approach instead of taking a scattershot approach while you have no idea where those people are. That's speaking from my experience with the research team over the past 10 years. You need to do the tracking studies. Now, the government's Census Statistics Department is doing work, but that's just guesswork. Now, the government's Census Statistics Department is doing work, but that's just guesswork. The National Statistical Administration has the stats, but there's a lack in the stats they compile. So that's something the government should bear in mind. In 033, both activities and research on promoting the Basic Law receives sponsorship. The amount is twenty-six million dollars. The amount has been dropping over the past few years. I know that has to do with Covid. But some groups have told us they apply for eight-hundred-thousand dollars or one-million dollars, but they end up getting somewhere below two-hundred-thousand dollars or just tens of thousands instead, so they cannot hold the activities. Can the government step up the work? There are groups committed to promoting the Constitution and the Basic Law. Can the government provide more support? And be more lenient in granting those sponsorship?
Secretary, thank you, Chairman. And I thank Dr. Chow Man Kuo for his questions and his suggestions. It is true that in terms of mainland policies formulated by this government, data will be essential in helping us conduct research and formulate policies. But very often, we do come across this situation. Some Hong Kong residents may have privacy concerns, and they are not obliged to tell us the details of their living, working, or studying in the mainland. They are not obliged to tell the Hong Kong SAR government. So that represents a difficult, that presents a difficulty for us. Still, we strive to conduct statistics and analysis based on the movement records. But these are estimates. Of course, the ideal situation is for us to be able to get our hands on data relating to Hong Kong residents living or working, studying in the mainland firsthand. But these are data kept by the relevant authorities in the mainland. As Dr. Chow Man Kuo just now mentioned, there are different units and administrations in the mainland keeping the statistics. And we also strive to obtain information through liaising with these units, such as the National Bureau of Statistics. They do keep statistics in relation to Hong Kong and Macau residents living in the mainland. So once we are able to get data from them, we will have a better idea of formulating policies and conducting analysis based on the data available. As for residents living in other cities, like I said, we, our ETOs rely on the Ministry of Education in obtaining data of students studying in mainland education institutions. Now, of course, for the data available, we can provide them after the meeting. Another question is on promotion of the Constitution and the Basic Law and the relevant expenditure. Of course, because of the epidemic, in the past two years, our work has been affected. But now with resumption tomorrow morning, we will be providing suitable subsidies to the proposals. Now, fourteen members have indicated that wish to speak. I need to draw a line because we're running out of time. Next, Mr. Kenneth Lo. I have a question on 057 and 058. Question fifty-seven relates to promotion and publicity of the Greater Bay Area. And the main reply refers to the Greater Bay Area Development Promotion Centre, and Secretary just now referred to the same. I understand the Promotion Centre comes under the Guangdong ETO as one of the teams. I'd like to know exactly what role the Promotion Centre plays. It should not be confined to relaying the Hong Kong government's messages. The Promotion Centre should take a more proactive approach, targeting different user groups. And then in the second part of the reply, I understand that you have set aside a budget for the Promotion Office, I mean for the Development Office. But the publicity effort is confined to, say, advertisements on TVB and other APIs. Since you've set aside some twenty-million dollars for the purpose of publicity and promotion, you should collaborate more frequently with NGOs so that you can reach out to the community. Because at the moment, there is only information about the population of the Greater Bay Area and other hard facts. You need to tell young people things that they're interested in. For example, there may be keen basketball players, and you need to tell them where they can play basketball. CMAB 058, Dr. Chow Man Kuo just now also asked about young people developing their careers in the Greater Bay Area. I really hope that the mainland officers can maintain close liaison with our young people in the mainland. I understand from your main reply that there is not a breakdown of the statistics that requested, but you do provide assistance and organize gatherings during festive seasons. Now, in the future, will you consider drawing up plans targeting youths in the Greater Bay Area? Because I need to see some results on how you provide assistance to Hong Kong young people in the mainland. Secretary, thank you, Chairman, and thank you, Mr. Lo, for your questions. First, about the Greater Bay Area Development Promotion Centre. This centre is set up under the Hong Kong Economic and Trade Office in Guangdong. In terms of taking forward the development in the Greater Bay Area, we do have the Greater Bay Area Development Office, and this is an office in Hong Kong for the purpose of liaising with various units in the mainland and coordinating Greater Bay Area development with different policy bureaus and departments. That is also tasked with organizing various activities and conducting exchanges with businesses and trade associations. Now, this is about the Greater Bay Area development that we undertake in Hong Kong. As for the Promotion Centre, the promotion effort is mainly undertaken by our staff in the Guangdong ETO. But having considered the actual situation, we find it necessary to set up a Promotion Centre. Now, the centre will first be set up in Guangdong, in Guangzhou. And depending on future development, if need be, we can expand the operation to cover more cities in Guangdong. It comes under the Guangdong ETO, which comes under our bureau as well as the Greater Bay Area Development Office. The Promotion Centre will provide information to Hong Kong people and enterprises in the mainland cities of the Greater Bay Area. It will also organize various activities and liaise with different businesses and enterprises to tell them about opportunities in Hong Kong so that we can give play to our dual role of going global and attracting foreign investment. So that we can be the core development driver in the Greater Bay Area. The other question is on our initiatives to help youths in the mainland. Now, as mentioned before, we have frequent exchanges with Hong Kong youths in the mainland. We tap the pulse and understand the situation across the border. We also have different schemes to help them with, say, their study, their employment, and their startup businesses. Depending on their needs, we will explore different arrangements to provide more suitable development opportunities for them. Next, Ms. Carmen Khan. Thank you, Chair. I have a question on 002 003 and 037. Well, I think that we're all concerned about the national development strategies and Greater Bay Area development. I'd like to focus on the resources available. We do have the Steering Group on Integration into National Development, chaired personally by the Chief Executive and underpinned by the three department secretaries as deputies. Now, as for the office establishment, it remains at thirty-three because the role remains the same. It is for the purpose, it plays a bridging role. But I don't think the administration has answered Mr. Ronik Chen's question. I'd like to pick this up. That is in relation to non-south cost of the Greater Bay Area Development Office. In 2022-23, the expenditure was forty-one million. It dropped by, it has dropped by twelve million to twenty-nine million dollars. So with a reduction of twelve million dollars, we are concerned whether there'll be sufficient resources for the office to provide cross-bureau support. As for the Guangdong ETO, the standing establishment is eighteen, and the Permanent Secretary just now said that they have sufficient resources. But then, you have the dedicated teams who are attracting businesses and talents. Then that comes under the Guangdong ETO as well, and the task is to be undertaken by the establishment of eighteen. Is that right? Does it mean that you are going to recruit additional manpower, or are you going to support the work with the existing establishment? Is it a combination of thirty-three for the Development Office, eighteen for the Guangdong ETO, and five for the GBA Development Promotion Centre? Secretary, thank you, Chairman, and thank you, Ms. Khan, for her questions. About Greater Bay Area Development Office. Last year, more resources were deployed to the office because of the twenty-fifth anniversary of the Hong Kong SAR, and we had to organize some celebration activities. Whereas for this year, in fact, the actual resources available remain the same. As for the five staff to be deployed to the Promotion Centre, these are additional posts. And as such, it will not affect the work of the Guangdong ETO. As for the dedicated team for attracting businesses and talents, staff will be redeployed under the Guangdong ETO. To be exact, staff will be redeployed from Invest Hong Kong to take up the work of the dedicated team. Of course, we'll closely monitor the manpower needs of, say, the GBA Development Office, the Guangdong ETO, and the Promotion Centre. If need be, we'll follow the established mechanism and submit an application for more resources. Right, you have five staff members for the Promotion Centre. Have all of them reported duty? I just want to emphasize that the Greater Bay Area development is of utmost importance. We need to provide support to meet the needs of the Promotion Centre. So have all the five offices reported duty? And also about deploying staff from Invest Hong Kong to the dedicated teams under the Guangdong ETO, have you kickstarted the process? Now, for the Promotion Centre, we are ready to recruit candidates to fill these posts. When the Promotion Centre is formally commissioned, these five staff members can resume the positions as quickly as possible. Right, subject to passage of the funding application, right? What about deploying staff from Invest Hong Kong to dedicated team? Yes. It is in progress. Say, as you know, there are many applications under the Top Talent Path Scheme. Thanks to the efforts of the dedicated team for attracting businesses and talents. And in fact, some successful applicants have come to Hong Kong.
Hi, Mr. Holden Chow. Thank you. CMAB 023 and 022. Let me start with CMAB 023. That's my question. The question is that since 1st of January 2020, Hong Kong and Macau residents have been able to take part in the mainland's social insurance. So there's this interim measures on the participation in social insurance by Hong Kong and Macau and Taiwan residents. Other members have also asked similar questions. The main reply says we don't have the data yet. You don't have the ways to access it yet. With data on social insurance, you can tell people's employment status. So can the government work with the mainland authorities to find out whether you can have access to data? That's important data. 022, also my question. That's a comment of mine. 022, that's a question about number of Hong Kong residents studying in the mainland. We're seeing a rising number. At first, it was more than sixteen thousand people. Now, the latest figure, more than twenty-one thousand people pursuing studies in the mainland. That's a good sign. Some choose, may choose to work in the mainland. Others may come back to Hong Kong for a job. The top three in the reply, Guangdong Province, Fujian Province, followed by Beijing. Those are top three choices for Hong Kong people pursuing studies in the mainland. So one comment from me. For these three locations, so many Hong Kong residents pursuing studies there, can we start with those three places? Find out what they're doing after they graduate there. The secretary was telling us that Hong Kong residents there have no duty to tell us what they do. But then, can you give it a try? These are some helpful figures. Beijing, with the three places with the most Hong Kong residents pursuing studies there, can we start there? Find out what people do after doing their schools there? Do they stay in the mainland for work, or do they come back to Hong Kong for a job? Getting the data will help us with drawing up our policies to integrate into national development. Secretary. Thank you. I thank Mr. Chow for his question. Let me start with the number of people taking part in social insurance on the mainland. Indeed, Hong Kong residents get to take part in the mainland's social insurance. That's a facilitation measure from the mainland for Hong Kong residents. Since the measures are launched, then Hong Kong residents can join the mainland's social insurance. Hong Kong residents apply to the mainland authorities. We don't have the data, so my apologies, we cannot provide the data in our main reply. Mr. Chow was wondering whether we could find out with the mainland authorities to get the data. We will give it a try. I looked at his question. I'm trying to talk to the mainland to see if we can get hold of the data. If we do have the data, then we can update the logical about that. The other question has to do with mainland places where many Hong Kong residents pursue studies on whether we can find out what their plans are after they graduate. We can look into this to see what we can find. Now, we care deeply about our young people. Want to find out whether they choose to pursue a career in the mainland or come back to Hong Kong. We will look into ways to get the data. Most people go to Guangdong Province, followed by Fujian Province.
Most people go to Guangdong Province, followed by Fujian Province, and then followed by Beijing. So those are the three places I was talking about. Next, Mr. Lam Chuen Sing.
Chair, to follow up on O three O, a question from Mrs. Regina Ip. This has to do with the Hong Kong Economic, Trade, and Cultural Office, Taiwan. Some years ago, that office did a lot of work. Promotion, for example, in economic affairs, trade, and tourism. But the Taiwan Office suspended operation in twenty twenty-one. There was a sharp drop in the expenditure. Now, we don't even have that expenditure. Still, there are Hong Kong people in Taiwan. The reply says this. An emergency comes up, say, there's an accident. There are casualties. In those cases, the Immigration Department follows up. But then, when it comes to the promotion of trade and tourism, doesn't mean the Constitutional and Mainland Affairs Bureau no longer has a role? Or there are other resources at the command of the CMAB to provide support for Hong Kong people in Taiwan? That's my first question. O nine six, reply, that's a question from Mr. Porter about voting for Hong Kong residents in the mainland. The government's reply is kind of cruel. The government says it would not consider setting up voting stations in the mainland. I will not underestimate the legal and technical difficulties about that. I know we cannot get it done anytime soon, but the government should continue studying the possibility. At the very least, though, can we replicate the practice from the last Legco general election? There were voting stations at the boundary control points. Twenty thousand or so people went to those polls. That's quite a good response. So can we have voting stations at the boundary crossing facilities? Now, normal correspondent travel has resumed. If we can have a voting station at those places, then that we can give an incentive for Hong Kong people on the mainland to go voting. Can we keep those polling stations? Thank you. First, I will address a point about Hong Kong people on the mainland voting. We explained the situation in our reply. There are legal and actual operational issues involved to set up polling stations in the mainland. We also have to coordinate with the mainland. That's a complex matter. We're not ruling out this entirely. We're saying that this would take detailed study, and we need thorough discussions in the community. And then we can consider this matter. We don't have the plans yet. We don't have a plan to implement that. We're not saying there's no plan to study the arrangement. We have to sort out all those legal and operational issues. There are many Hong Kong people in the mainland. If we can let them vote, that will be a source of great convenience for Hong Kong people. Now, for the voting stations at the boundary crossing facilities, that was a special arrangement during the COVID times. Much work was done. A lot of manpower had to be mobilized. And we also had the cooperation from the mainland authorities to make that happen. COVID is over now. If people can get to the boundary crossing facilities, they can actually come back to Hong Kong and vote. But is it justified to have those polling stations again? Then we have to consider the costs and benefits. The government will consider the circumstances in each case. During COVID, there was a special arrangement. If there are special circumstances in the future, then we will consider those factors. The other question has to do with the Economic, Trade, and Cultural Offices in Taiwan. Some time ago, there were some actions on the Taiwan side, and that caused problems for the relations between Hong Kong and Taiwan. We are also concerned about staff safety in our Taiwan office. That's why we suspended the operation of our Taiwan office. Our Trade Development Council also has an office in Taiwan to provide appropriate support for Hong Kong businessmen in Taiwan. There is also information online. In special cases, there are eight, one eight six eight for Hong Kong people there to seek help. When there is an emergency or special cases, we have a line of communication. There's a way to, for us to provide support. Next, Mr. Tang Fei.
Thank you. Seventy-two and seventy-four, the two replies. In O seven two, my question is promoting the national security law internationally. Paragraph four in the reply says that our principal officials will offer reputations and clarifications when there is, when there is an attempt to smear us. There will also be efforts to public, to promote the national security law. The three ETOs are listed, Washington, New York, and San Francisco. But there is no information on the national security law on the website of those three websites. I used the search function, no result on the national security law. So for those three US ETOs, how do they promote our national security law? My second question for O seven four, slightly similar to the question from Mr. Lam Chuen Sing. My question is, over the past three years of COVID, what policy measures have there been to promote economic and trade cooperation among the mainland, Hong Kong, Hong Kong, leverage the important role of Hong Kong as a bridge between the mainland and Taiwan? The secretary was tell us, when there's an emergency, a special circumstances, you get in touch with the mainland, with the Taiwan. So there is no regular interaction between Hong Kong and Taiwan in terms of trade and commerce? There is interaction only when an emergency comes up. Is that the case? Thank you. First, on our economic and trade offices overseas. For these ETOs, they tell the outside world about Hong Kong. They tell good stories of Hong Kong, the true picture of Hong Kong. There are some developments in recent years. Their media smear and vilify Hong Kong. We have to make an effort to tell the outside world what things are really like in Hong Kong. Our staff in those overseas ETOs get in touch with local groups. They talk to the local business communities, the local Hong Kong people, and other overseas Chinese bodies. In these interactions, the staff members tell them about the national security law, the superiority, and the advantages of the improved electoral system. There are activities. The staff members also get in touch with the media there to tell those people about our situation. Then there is also the Hello Hong Kong campaign. As we relaunch our city, we showcase our strengths. That's also part of the routine work of these overseas ETOs. On the Taiwan Office, for some time, the Taiwan side engaged in certain conduct that disrupted the relationship between Hong Kong and Taiwan. We have also considered the personal safety of the staff members in our Taiwan office. So then we decided to suspend the operation of the Taiwan Office. In the absence of any improvement, we have no plan to resume the operation of our Taiwan Office. On official exchanges, in special cases, say, Hong Kong people in Taiwan need urgent support and help. There may be exchange, but without, in, in the absence of those cases, there is no exchange.
Dr. Tan Yu-hung. My first question is to follow up on zero seven one, which is a question on the mainland offices. I thank the administration for giving us, giving me this full reply. Now, on paragraph four, the work on publicity, promotion, communication, liaison, etc. is an integral part of the duties and functions of the mainland offices. The expenditure and manpower involved have not been singled out and itemized. Actually, I ask this question because I'd like to know the expenditure of the mainland offices. Since there is no itemized expenditure information available, with more duties taken up by the office, you should consider providing us with itemized expenditure instead of just a ballpark, um, uh, single figure. The other question is on the Hong Kong ETO in Taiwan. Uh, other members have asked similar questions, and I heard the administration's reply. Now, Mr. Ma Ying-jo, the former Taiwan leader, um, took a thirty student-strong delegation to visit, on a visit. And at the community level, things were very smooth. Um, the feedback was quite good. Now, the long-term prosperity and stability of Hong Kong hinges on the one country, two systems principle. And this trip is good publicity for one country, two systems. As Hong Kong enters a new phase of prosperity after restoring order from chaos, we need to enhance liaison and communication in this regard. Now, um, will resources be set aside to attract more visitors from Taiwan to come to Hong Kong and to feel for themselves the changes in Hong Kong as we move into a new phase of prosperity? Are there plans? I thank you for the two questions. About the mainland offices and the publicity effort, members ask for the breakdown of expenditure of the mainland offices. As we said in our reply, the mainland offices take up various duties, such as promotion, publicity, and other areas of work. Uh, it is not possible to provide an itemized, um, set of figures. But in terms of overall management, we allow flexibility. We have a small establishment, but all our staff members are dedicated to their parts of the work. We have flexibility in our management. In other words, we deploy staff flexibly in, um, taking up various duties. Now, if there is too much on the plate and more manpower resources are needed, we will follow the established procedures and apply with, um, the government. But on the whole, we follow the established procedures in taking forward our day-to-day duties. So that's a question on mainland offices. As for the other question regarding the Hong Kong ETO in Taiwan, as explained just now, the series of acts by Taiwan have disrupted the relationship between Hong Kong and Taiwan. So without any breakthrough in the current situ, of the current situation, we have no plan to resume the normal operation of the Hong Kong ETO. At the same time, of course, we welcome citizens of Taiwan to come here for sightseeing and for other purposes. Of course, we welcome them. We have just kickstarted the Hello Hong Kong large-scale promotional campaign. We also welcome visitors from Taiwan. We'd like them to visit us more frequently. Two question, next two questions. First question relates to the suspension of operation of the Hong Kong ETO in Taiwan since twenty twenty-one. But this is also an actual fact that we have Hong Kong residents living in Taiwan. We have, um, Hong Kong citizens traveling to Taiwan to visit their relatives. And indeed, some Hong Kong residents would like to retire in Taiwan because of, um, the living standard. And there are also students who would like to further their studies in Taiwan. But I have also received inquiries for assistance. They are anxious, uh, because of lack of support in the event of them being arrested, um, in the street. So how about you give an assure, reassurance? Say, for Hong Kong residents in distress in Taiwan, um, is there any avenue for them to seek help from the government? Second question, Mr. Staney Ng is, uh, one of the NPC deputies. And he once proposed the following. Some housing units can be purchased in the Greater Bay Area to accommodate Hong Kong residents. And surprise, uh, and, uh, and, and actually, the prestigious professor, Professor Nelson Chow floated a similar concept. He supported the idea. He said that a retire, a village for retirees, so to speak, can be set up in the Greater Bay Area. Now, um, maybe, uh, the Greater Bay Area presents a more suitable environment for retirees to live in because of the living costs and because of the environment in general. Do you have anything in the pipeline to help, um, translate these ideas into actual proposals? Secretary.
First, about Hong Kong residents in distress in Taiwan. Simply put, I can say this categorically, that if anything goes wrong, you can just call one eight six eight. That's a hotline for Hong Kong residents requesting assistance. The Immigration Department has dealt with a lot of these cases through the hotline. Even in the absence of the Taiwan Office, we do our best to help any Hong Kong residents stranded in distress in Taiwan. About purchasing housing units in Greater Bay Area and building a village for retirees, uh, so to speak, uh, we welcome different ideas. We try our best to consider all the ideas and suggestions so that we, after giving them some thought, uh, we conduct research with the relevant departments and authorities. And we also seek policy support from the central authorities with a view to formulating the relevant policies. The Steering Group for Integration into National Development held two meetings, and the Chief Executive has proposed a, an approach. That is, we take three depths, three steps. The first step is to conduct research on supporting measures for Hong Kong residents and Hong Kong enterprises in the mainland. After research-
After research, the next step is to coordinate the efforts of different policy bureaus. Cross-bureau support is needed for coordinated policy formulation. Third, there should be proper supervision so that we check the progress. And this is close to the heart of the chief executive. And if need be, he can strive for better support from the central authorities to expedite the progress so that policies can be effectively implemented. This is the way to go. Now, about different requests from the community, different ideas, we do our best to receive all of them. And we, with a view to drawing up policies that can benefit Hong Kong residents. Next, Doctor So Chiu-wing. I thank the administration for replying to my question. The reply serial number is C M A B O six four. This is about Greater Bay Area Development Promotion Center. I put this question about the Development Promotion Center because it is common fact that Greater Bay Area development is conducive to Hong Kong's development. And definitely, I need to ask about the roles and functions of the Promotion Center. A more targeted approach should be taken, in other words. But I find the administration's reply quite disappointing because the office will only be supported by five staff members. And in twenty twenty-three, twenty-four, about six point six two million dollars estimated expenditure has been set aside for the Promotion Center. I think a large portion of this estimate will go to office rental and staff emolument. What about promoting the development proactively? My, my question is whether more resources can be set aside. It's not, it shouldn't be just window dressing. The other question is about C M A B O six five. I'd like to pick up on the figures presented. I, I don't get this table. I ask about the number of applications applying for permits in the past three years. And then, and then according to the table here, two thousand two hundred and seventy-five applications were received by Guangdong E T O. And seven thousand six hundred and eleven were approved. I don't know why this number is bigger than the number of applications received. And for home return permits, some five thousand applications received and just one thousand two hundred permits issued. I don't understand this difference. Secretary. Thank you, Chairman, and thank you, Mr. So, for the questions. Let me answer the first question you asked about the gap between the number of applications and the number of permits issued. Now, first and foremost, you can apply in Hong Kong and then collect this document in the mainland. It's a facilitation measure. So you can apply here in Hong Kong, and then you can specify the collection point as the office in the mainland. So that's one scenario to account for the difference between the number of applications and the number of documents collected. Secretary. How about another scenario? Somebody applied last year and then only collected the document this year. That's also true. But the vast difference is mainly attributable to the different po, points of collection and application. So that's the case for either the Hong Kong S R passport or the document of identity for visa purposes. Now, to answer your question on the Promotion Center, at the moment, the establishment stands at five. We are at the initial stage. The office is, I mean, the Promotion Center comes under the Guangdong E T O. No rental is required. This, now we start the operation in Guangzhou first, and depending on the operational needs, if necessary, we will submit an application for more manpower resources. Now, the Promotion Center doesn't work alone. We have, say, the Greater Bay Area Development Office in Hong Kong, and the Guangdong E T O also has its own resources to provide support. So we are looking at this model of support for Hong Kong residents and Hong Kong enterprises and to help Hong Kong play the dual role of going global and attracting foreign investment. We will conduct a review and adjust our strategy.
Mr. Peter Xu. Our national policy is for Hong Kong to integrate international development. I believe that's a lot of work for the C M A B. So my first question is, C M A B reply serial number double O two. We need to develop the Greater Bay Area. Then the question is, the role for the business community, what can it do? In paragraph, a certain paragraph there, it says the Economic and Trade Office in Guangdong has been doing a lot of work, twenty twenty-one to twenty-two, twenty-one to twenty-two, and twenty-two to twenty-three. The establishment and expenditure are set out in the reply, eighteen workers. But then in twenty twenty-one and twenty-two, there are roughly fifty-nine million dollars in expenditure. In twenty twenty-two, twenty-three, expenditure was seventy-eight million dollars. The same eighteen officers, but the expenditure rose by roughly twenty-eight million dollars. I believe there were salaries. But why this increase by twenty-eight million dollars? Were there more promotion activities? Do you have enough? Another question, C M A B double O six. Development of young people in the mainland. Starting from the first of March, twenty twenty-three, the Greater Bay Area Youth Employment Scheme has been regularized. So young people from Hong Kong will get hired for a job in the Greater Bay Area for pay no less than eighteen thousand dollars. There's also a ten thousand dollar subsidy for Hong Kong firms in the Greater Bay Area. The direction is right when it comes to getting our young people to work in the mainland. But then, Secretary, you've heard that there's a labor crunch, hiring problems across all sectors. Can we get workers to come to Hong Kong? Does the secretary have any views on this? Thank you. Let me start with the second question on human resources. We encourage young people to pursue development in the Greater Bay Area. We provide subsidies. But how do we also meet the needs of Hong Kong at the same time? How do we get talent and indeed manpower in general to come to Hong Kong? This is an area close to the heart of the Hong Kong government. Manpower for Hong Kong's development, this is an issue close to the heart of many people. If there's a need, we need to make the arrangements. Our labor policy has been like this. If we cannot hire the kind of worker or if there's a need for a certain kind of workers, as long as there's no impact on the local workers, and then there are policy arrangements to address that. I believe the government will do a holistic review of the situation. With the current situation, if there's a shortage of a certain kind of human resources, as long as the local workers are protected, then, and if there's a need to bring in workers, then bring them in. I believe there will be logical discussions on the relevant policy arrangement. On the Guangdong Economic and Trade Office, the establishment has remained unchanged. There were fluctuations in the expenditure. The establishment covered the pay for the Hong Kong staff there. But those offices, but that office also hires mainland staff. So you're saying that that office hired more mainland staff, so you needed more people. We have not just Hong Kong staff at the Guangdong office. The Guangdong office also hires mainland staff. It depends on the workload. If needed, we get the right kind of worker. Next, Mr. Tony Te. Thank you. Serial number, C M A B O double two. Hong Kong residents pursuing studies at mainland universities and postgraduate institutes. Twenty-one thousand five hundred and nineteen, as at the end of last year. Seventeen thousand in undergraduate studies. Roughly ten thousand in Guangdong province, others in other provinces, Fujian province or in Beijing, et cetera. We want to bring in talent. So coming back to the question and the reply, these are Hong Kong residents. One day they graduate. Will the Hong Kong government follow up with them to find out whether they will pursue a career in the mainland? Or will the government help these graduates, provide the appropriate measures so as to bring them back to Hong Kong? So that we can make good use of this kind of talent. Has this been done? Are there any plans to do this in the future? Thank you. In total, more than twenty-one thousand Hong Kong students pursuing studies at mainland higher education institutions. More than seventeen thousand are doing undergraduate studies. That universities across the entire mainland. It would be tough to follow up on every one of them. Another member just then raised a similar point. We will try to talk to the mainland to get hold of the data for our mainland offices. They hold talks at mainland universities, career talks, for example. The officers tell the graduates about Hong Kong, but it's up to those graduates. They can choose to pursue development in the mainland. We provide the right kind of information. For graduates who want to come back to Hong Kong, we also provide career-related information. It depends on the situation. We provide the appropriate support. Chair, I'm aware that many education institutions are involved. In the past, the Hong Kong government has been less than proactive in talking to the mainland. There are many universities in Hong Kong. Our local universities care deeply about what their graduates do. In the mainland, there are more than seventeen thousand Hong Kong residents pursuing studies. It makes sense to put more resources into this kind of work. The government has been less than active. We have mainland offices, but they provide limited services. Now these offices are expanding the scope of services. We want to integrate international development. We need to give Hong Kong students in the mainland options. We need to get some of them to come back to Hong Kong. If you can do more work, then we can see better results. I hope, Secretary, you can follow up on this matter. Don't let the talent go to waste. Just then, Mr. Holden Chow raised a similar point. He suggested focusing or starting with Guangdong, Fujian, and Beijing. After all, there are many Hong Kong residents pursuing studies at those three places. As I said just then, we would do our best to provide support. Whether they, that is, the graduates want to pursue development in the mainland of Hong Kong, we provide support. We will wrap up our session here. Secretary. Members, focus on three issues first. Data. How do you gather the data to make sure the resources are well-used and support Hong Kong residents pursuing studies or living in the mainland? I am aware that some data are sensitive, so you have to think about how to collect the data. The second point members care deeply about. We have mainland offices in Guangdong, in Beijing. But they have a small amount of resources. Do they need more resources so that we can integrate into national development? The third point members focused on is that how do we bring back Hong Kong residents pursuing studies in the mainland? How do we get them to help us support our own economic development? Please follow up on these points. Noted, Chairman. We will work on these three points and do better. Thank you. I thank you, Secretary, and your team for joining a session. We will pick up at five past five for the next session.